It'll be fine.
No, we're not gonna...
Good evening, and we're bringing the May 21st Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. It is the evening part of our meeting, and we are so fortunate to have on our agenda, first on the agenda, the Youth Advisory Committee year-end presentation, and I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Pat Gerard, since she is capably and ably led this group this past year, as well as a few years before that, and we're so gracious for gracious and grateful.
You are gracious.
Graciously grateful for her leadership and steering our young folks in this wonderful committee.
Well, actually, I'm gonna let Iris Champlin, our board chair for this year, she's gonna do a little presentation, and then I'll go down there and have some certificates.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hi, I just wanna start off and say thank you for having us today. Okay. So, our demographics for this year, Yak members came from seven different schools. This includes home schools, traditional public high schools, as well as two dual enrollment students, and then we have all grades from ninth through 12th grade. So, what did Yak do this year? This year Yak had nine meetings, we visited seven different county departments, and we completed two projects. Our first project that we completed was our t-shirt project, and I have a couple of them for you guys, no fighting over them.
Unfold them and take a look at them.
So, this all depends on the size of this.
Yeah.
That's medium, so I can't very...
You could try. But yeah, it just has all of our names on the back, and we kind of did a little updated Yak logo, and yeah, we're all wearing them today.
Commissioner Peters wants to keep them.
She should.
We have a couple extras, so...
Who designed your logo?
What's that?
Who designed the logo?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Excellent.
You all are stuck with your next year, so... Give that woman a t-shirt.
The second project that we did was actually a community service project. We went to Heritage Village. Let's see here. Activities included helping out in the garden, we pulled weeds, we trimmed bushes. Three of our male members actually dug a giant stump out of the ground, which was... Yeah, that was impressive. They're holding it there. And then, we helped out in the houses, just for some basic cleaning, we did some vacuuming, dusting, we beat the rugs, got all the dust out of them, so that's what we did. We spent about three hours there on a Saturday afternoon. And then, something very interesting that happened this year was, we actually had two county departments come to us and ask for our input. So, the first department that came and spoke to us was the Planning Department, and Rebecca Stonefield from Pinellas County's Planning Department presented Plan Pinellas, the county's comprehensive plan. She needed community input from all age groups, so she reached out to us. Yak provided feedback for video enhancement, as well as explained what would make us wanna stay in this county. Answers included affordable housing, more transportation, and job opportunities. And the second department that came and wanted our input was actually the Human Resources Department. Irene Carolak with the Human Resources Department presented new promotional materials for Pinellas County's careers at Yak's December meeting. She wanted a youth perspective on where they, where we typically look for jobs and careers, as well as what careers we're actually interested in. So Yak provided feedback on promotional materials, adjustments that we would make, and what we liked about them. And now, I would like to introduce Kyle Barron. He served as our Parks and Conservation Resources representative, and he's just gonna talk about one of the meetings that he had with them.
Hello, I'm Kyle Barron, and I was the Parks and Conservation Resources representative from the Youth Advisory Committee. We mainly went over how little money is put into the project for as much amount of damage that it does take in. People graffitiing, litter, stuff like that requires a lot more attention than people give it, and it is a large issue, and that takes a lot of funding away from the real projects that need to be done to improve our area. That's mainly our parks, that's something that brings a lot of people in. I know me, living close to a park, that's where I love to go, to hang out, and go look at the water, play on the swing, I don't know. It's what brings people together, and that's why it is very important that we make sure people know that it is not smart to litter or vandalize property. If you want to better your community, don't drag it down.
Good point.
And I will now turn it back over to Iris.
And I did not put him up to that. I'll tell you that.
Thank you, Kyle. So, where did Yak go this year? Yak visited the County Justice Center, it was one of our first meetings, we actually did the tour, very interesting. We went to the Planning Department, we visited the Traffic Control Center, we visited Animal Services, the St. Pete Clearwater Airport, and the Medical Examiner's Office. And finally, oh, there's a picture of us at the airport, it's very fun. And finally, I have a few testimonials from some Yak members. The first one says, "I was able to get an internship with the Human Resources Department of Pinellas County through my involvement with Yak." The second one is, "I am very grateful, because before Yak, I did not consider going into the government, and now that is what I'm going to school for."
Awesome.
Yes, that's a good one.
Jack committed to it.
This year was really cool, especially when we got to tour the different parts of government and learn about the opportunities in our own community. And one of our members actually wanted to get up and share a personal testimony, so open it.
Well, my name is Olney Paris, and I just wanted to share with you guys about my experience this year, and how much I have learned. I'm not going into anything like government-related, I'm going into music and stuff, but I do love learning, and that's what this year has been all about. We, as she just showed you all the places that we went, I learned so many different facts about the different places, like, for example, I did not know that the airport was government-run. I did not know that we had one big center for traffic, and I did not know that the jail that's literally right down the road from my house that we keep, yeah, that we keep inmates in, like, some of them stay there forever. It's not just, you know, you come in, you come out, like, and just lots of different things about this year. But what really interested me also was that the airport, it had, the airport owns a lot of, like, land in the county, and it rents it out, and many of the airport jobs, like, they're government positions, which I had no idea, I thought it was big business. But that's all that I had to share about this year, and it was a really cool experience.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
And that wraps up our little overview for this year. Thank you guys so much. You guys can keep the shirts.
Question, there are questions? Does anybody have any questions? I have a question, surprise. So, I'm curious about whether or not any of you gave a thought to maybe running for political office one day and being one of us.
I personally have not, I'm not sure about anyone else.
All right, awesome.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Never know.
Well, let us also offer to the two that raised your hands, all of us are happy to do job shadowing for a part of a day or a whole day, so if you wanna come and see what being in elected office is like, we're happy to show you.
Commissioner Eggers wanted to check their address first, though.
I just wanted to ask Iris, who was the person that's gonna get an internship with HR, and what was some of the thinking, and what do you look forward to the most?
Well, I actually wanted to be a lawyer for the longest time, and I took legal studies classes, and I'm like, "I'm good at this, but it's kinda boring," so, just a little bit boring. So, Irene actually visited us, I went over it briefly and talked about how she wanted our input, and by that point, I was kind of in my mind thinking about different trails that I could go down career-wise, and I was looking at marketing at the time, and that's what I was planning on majoring in, and she went down the table and asked us what we're planning on majoring in, and I said, "Marketing," and she was like, "I have an internship for you." And I was like, "I'll take it." So, I've been interning there since January, I believe, beginning of January, and I absolutely love it, so...
And you'll be there next year.
Yes, I will be, I will be there next year, hopefully getting a job possibly in the same field, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Best of luck.
What a great story.
And I'm really happy to hear in your report that the departments asked for your input, because that was one of the main reasons why we created Yak, was we wanted your perspective on different things that county government was doing.
Yeah, and I think that's something that, I've been in Yak for three years now, and we did it a little bit the past couple of years, but this year was the first time that we had two departments reach out to us, so it was really exciting.
So, I have one more question. Have you... Please. So, did, have you had an opportunity to present any of your experiences to your classmates?
Well, personally, I'm in, I was in early college, so a lot of my classmates were college students, and I took college classes. I'm not sure if anyone else in Yak has.
No, that's unfortunate, 'cause we're always looking for new, young people to come into Yak, and getting the word out is really important to us.
And I think that's something I was talking about with Ms. Whitney Creach, talking about implementing a new way to market per se the committee and get the word out, and yeah, so hopefully this upcoming year, we'll have a few more members, so...
Good, thank you. Commissioner Peters is gonna be your liaison next year, so maybe you can tell her.
Who's graduating this year?
Well, I'm gonna give them certificates, so as they come up, I'll have them tell you. Let's see, Audrey Anderson, is she here? Yes, hi.
And if, and these are the ones graduating?
Uh, no, you're not.
What grade is she going into?
You're a sophomore, okay, why don't you come over here and give me your, here you go, thank you.
I'm going to the 11th grade, so still got...
What school?
I'm homeschooled, actually.
Okay.
All right, Kyle Barron.
We need pomp and circumstance in the background.
Oh, don't go away, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a picture. And Kyle's in what grade and what school?
I am in junior year currently, going into senior year of Seminole High School.
Seminole High School, excellent.
And I will say, we have the principal of Seminole High School here today.
There she is, back there, oh, Ms. Lucas.
There she is, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, Iris, and Iris is graduating this year.
I just graduated, actually.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I graduated out of St. Pete College's Early College Program.
And what's your next plans?
I'm taking a gap year to do my internship, and then next year I'm planning on U S F.
She's taking a gap year and volunteering, or...
Interning.
Interning with the county. I'm sorry, I didn't know you heard me.
My name's Maxine, I go to Seminole High, and I'm in ninth grade, so going into tenth.
All right, well, tell your friends, so they can come back with you next year. Bryce Hawkinson, not here, Bryce, all right. Brandon Hernandez.
Is that justice?
There you go, thank you. I knew we should have that in the background.
Bunch of comedians up there.
What school are you in?
I am Brandon, I am currently in Ossio La Fundamenta High, I'm just a freshman, and I'm more interested, oh, all right, I'm interested in coming back here for all four years.
All right.
Great, great.
I didn't hear how old he was in what school, or what grade.
I see.
Freshman, so you're a sophomore next year? And where you at?
Ossio La Fundamenta High.
Great.
Okay, Alexandria Hicks. Ava McEwen. Hi.
Hi, I'm a sophomore at Palm Harbor University High School.
Maybach Neister.
Yes.
All right. Tamden Paris. The troublemaker.
I knew it.
Just looks like one, doesn't it?
Hello, I'm Tamden Paris, I will be attending all four years here, and I'll be going into the 10th grade next year.
You're going into 10th grade?
10th grade next year.
10th grade, and what school?
Seminole High School.
All right.
That's Lopez, you better watch out for him.
Oh, boy. Albeni Paris. I probably said that wrong.
Yes.
Like New York, okay.
I'm a junior, and I go to Seminole High School, so I'll be a senior next year.
And you think you'll be back?
Probably, it depends on my time commitment.
I'm gonna make it fun, I promise.
Guys get busy, yeah. Shannon Pico.
No, Shannon's not here.
Okay, Emily Santiana. Okay, understand these kids are, they're out of school already. Peter, Peters here, Peters Stropoulos. And Peter's not a troublemaker.
Yeah, I go, he's like, high school, and I'm a sophomore, so yeah.
And you coming back next year?
Yes.
All right.
And he's Greek.
Caitlin TruHillow. Last but not least, this is our secretary.
Hi, I just graduated, I spent all four years at Yak, and I am a homeschooled student and dual enrollment student.
And are you going off to college now?
Actually, I took an internship in Ohio, and so I will be moving there for the semester, and then coming back here.
Okay, and then you're gonna apply for a job at the county?
Yes.
All right, cool, well, let's take some pictures.
Do you mind moving in a little bit? Yes. Make sure it's spinning anyway. I'm gonna take one more, just in case someone's late. I got it, thank you.
Everybody else get pictures?
While you're filing out, I just wanted to say thanks to all the parents and principals for schlepping kids back and forth and supporting them in doing this this year, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I echo Commissioner Gerard's comments, thank you to the parents and friends who are with their students tonight, and Seminole High School principal, and any of others that are present, so thank you for your support of our, of our next generation.
Yes.
Okay, we have three public hearings, and we'll start with the Educational Facilities Authority, which is Agenda Item 36.
Item number 36 is a proposed Tax Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act resolution authorizing issuance by the Pinellas County Educational Facilities Authority of its revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2019A and 2019B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,300,000 on behalf of Pinellas Preparatory Academy Incorporated. The public hearing was properly advertised, the affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, I don't have any cards of anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Then I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Welch. Okay, if we can open up the voting ballots. I should, I'm voting yes, and then who else? My voting card didn't come up, so I'll leave and rejoin. Okay, next on the agenda is, pass this unanimously, next is Agenda Item 37, sitting as the Board of County Commissioners.
Item 37 is a quasi judicial hearing, and all testimony must be given under oath. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Item 37 is a quasi judicial petition to vacate submitted by Anthony Mendillo and Jeannie Mendillo and the Bayou Club Community Association, Inc., for the northerly five feet of the 10-foot drainage and utility easement lying adjacent to the southerly boundary of Lot 2 of the Bayou Club Estates. The public hearing was properly advertised, the affidavit of publication has been received for filing, letters of no objection have been received from the appropriate parties, all interested parties have been notified as to the date of the public hearing, no correspondence has been received, the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Hey, I have no cards from anyone in the public wishing to speak on this agenda item. Does anyone wish to speak? I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. Okay, on to our last Agenda Item number 38.
Item number 38 is proposed resolution revising the retail water, wholesale water, retail sewer, wholesale sewer, retail reclaimed water, and wholesale reclaimed water rates. Public hearing was properly advertised, affidavit of publication has been received for filing, no correspondence has been received, the matter is properly before the board to be heard.
Okay, we, this is a public hearing, I do not, again, have anybody who wishes to speak on this agenda item.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Long, I didn't hear where the second?
Peters.
Commissioner Peters, thank you. Do anybody have any questions on it?
Just have a comment, just for folks that might be tuning in for the first time, we have extensively discussed this in workshops and meetings, so I just wanted to state that for the record for somebody that might just be tuning in.
We were pleased that, you know, this, the consultant was named Stantec, and if you'd like, there is a presentation that's 10 pages long of their rate study.
That's not part of our packet, though, is it? I didn't see the presentation.
Yes, it is.
Saw the detailed report.
There's a PowerPoint presentation, PDF, that goes through all the different rates. Would you like that to be presented? Okay.
Yeah.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay. We have had this presented before, but just...
There it is.
For the public's knowledge, we'll do it again.
Good to be with you again.
Hello.
Jeff Dyke, Stantec. This is a little bit of a summarized version of what you heard back in February, but we'll go through summarizing the results and recommendations of the rate study, and that's the basis of the four-year rate plan that we're considering this evening. We performed a rate study, developed a 10-year multi-financial management plan for the utilities, and we're recommending a four-year rate plan this evening for your consideration. The high-level summary of the outcome is that for the typical residential customer, there'll be no change in their water bill over the next four years, water portion of their bill, and while the sewer portion will increase by nine and a half percent. And I get what that means, on the typical bill, is an increase of about five and a half percent per year over the next four years. Specific on the water system, the rate study identified a four-year plan of 1% annual rate increases. Two main objectives within the water system, one was to improve the overall fixed charge recovery. Currently, 13% of your revenues are recovered from fixed charges, while about 85% of your costs are fixed, so just trying to improve that a little bit. And second objective related to that is, the recommended, in order, recommended rates are in order with best practices in terms of addressing the current water-based charges. Right now, a customer with any meter larger than a 5/8 inch meter, no matter what your meter size, you pay the same base charge. And so, that doesn't, what that doesn't do is recognize the difference in potential capacity and demand that larger meter sizes offer, and so the four-year rate plan scales those charges over a four-year period according to meter size. These are the corresponding water rates, as the plan I described, and you'll see by fiscal year 2023, the 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch charge stays the same, and about 92% of your customers have that 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch meter, so that part of the rate will stay the same. And a 2-inch meter, for example, by 2023, which has eight times the capacity of a 3/4 or 5/8 inch meter, their base rate will be eight times that of the 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch meter. No change on the usage charge for water, and the wholesale rates are escalated by one, or increased by 1% a year. For the sewer system, the rate study identified a four-year plan of nine and a half percent annual rate increases. The main driver of this is a capital improvement program that is about $40 million a year over the next five years. A lot of reinvestment in underground infrastructure, investment at the treatment plants, there's projects for resiliency, reclaim water metering, and customer information system investment, so a lot of important investments in the sewer system. And the nine and a half percent is recommended, the rates reflected here, the nine and a half percent is applied across the board to base and usage charges, as well as to retail and wholesale customers. With regard to reclaim water, now, three main components to the recommendations, one objective was to establish a structure and implement a rate structure for reclaimed water that encourages or helps the county with supply management, so we wanna encourage folks to use, customers to use reclaimed water, but not to a point where excessive use. And so, the rate structure that you'll see on the next slide develops a metered, a metered charge for metered service of 15,000 gallons included in the base charge, and so anything above the 15,000 would be charged at the usage rate identified. The second main component on reclaimed water is to align the fees for like services, and then the third component is to improve overall cost recovery for reclaimed water. Right now, that system recovers about a third of its costs, and so by the end of the four year period, that'll be about 45%. These are the actual reclaimed water rates proposed, and you'll see that by fiscal year 2023, the charges are aligned for the different types of service, on metered service and metered service. developer-funded and then county-funded, which is this unfunded. Rates are the same. The only difference would be those customers in the county-funded system would pay the $7 availability charge. As far as the impacts to reclaimed water customers, you'll see by 2023, once again, over the four-year phase-in, that the only difference between services, the first line there and then the third section of customers is the $7 availability charge. But for unmetered service, it's the same, same charge, with the exception of that availability charge. 95% of the county's customers are in this third line, the county-funded, unmetered group. And their bill will increase by $1.50 a month, month over month, year over year, over the next four years.
Excuse me, could you go back to that slide? I was just trying to see where you talked about, oh, okay, percentage of customers, it's less than 0.5%. But it was the funded, metered.
Yep. Funded in this case is developer-funded.
Okay. And those are, and some of those are metered, just.
Yes.
Okay. And our, most of the customers that are funded currently are not metered.
That's correct. Yep.
But in that planned period, we're moving towards metering.
Yeah. So in the CIP, there's investment in reclaimed water meters. And so one of the objectives was to establish a metered charge, which is, which would be reflected here on, in the bottom section. So as customers move from this 95% group to the, to the line beneath it, if, as they get metered, they would come on to the metered rates. Now, the metered rate structure include, is a base charge of $22,000 or $22, and it includes 15,000 gallons of metered. So.
Yeah. Again, just in some experience, we're, in Dunedin as an example, during the rainy season, there really is no surcharge for extra usage. During the dry time of the season, you get to that 15,000 gallons in this case, and then it's a significant increase. Now, it's metered there. So I'm assuming that as we move towards that, because during the summertime, obviously, we're trying to put less water out into the sound or into the, anywhere. So we'd like to make sure that we encourage usage. Are we going to be moving in that direction? Do you see with metering to be, being able to move into that direction to?
Yeah, you have the opportunity to move that direction. Right now, we wanted to, because of the lack of, there's not as many customers at this point with reclaimed that are metered. And so we want to have the rate structure in place so that when they do get metered, they come onboard to that rate structure.
Yes. Hi, thank you. Megan Ross, Utilities Director, Pinellas County. Yes, we are moving in that direction. But as Jeff stated, until everyone is metered, having some that are not metered and some that are metered becomes very difficult to have varying rate structures for varying customers. So once we can install all those meters, we can get into a more seasonal approach to our billing cycles because right now, we're billing every other month. And it becomes very difficult to have a seasonal rate structure, if you will. So once we get those meters installed, we can move to a monthly billing cycle. And then we can have seasonal structures in place.
I certainly hope with the meters that we're able to find that additional product that will allow that extra usage during the summer. And because people tend not to use it, obviously, during the summer. So.
Absolutely.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other question?
Yes, please.
On the water, on the water system, you mentioned in the sewer numbers that there's a lot of capital built into that, built into those, that rate increase. It's driven by a capital improvement program that's pretty aggressive. I think that was Slide, Slide 5.
Slide 5.
Yeah. What, I mean, and we're not having, we're not seeing big increases in the, in the water side. I'm assuming that there's a very active capital program in the, in the water side as well. But.
Yes, absolutely. There's, over the next five years, it's about 92 million on the water side. And we're also on the verge of conducting a water system master plan. And on the sewer side, over the next five years, it's just over 200 million on the sewer side. So sometimes it's cyclical. We had a large investment in the water system in the Keller facility a couple of years back. And we're, like I said, embarking on a water system master plan to determine the total system needs. But yes, at this point, the sewer system is more aggressive.
And then how is the final, final question? How is the mapping of our water and sewer lines going? How is that, you know, trying to understand the condition of those lines? Because we had some problems three or four years ago in the condition of those lines. How's that, how's the determining the condition of those going?
Of both the water and sewer lines. So on the sewer side, we just completed a 10-year TV video of all of our gravity sewer lines. And we're also conducting a number of force main assessments, which are a little bit more difficult, using ultrasonic testing to determine thickness. But we are, we are embarking on a condition-based assessment of our infrastructure. So we are moving along rapidly with that. We have a number of studies going on and, and, yes.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
So Megan, given this completion that you've done and the assessments that you've done, are you foreseeing the overflows that we've had in the past from our system because of the aging infrastructure? Is that still going to be a problem moving forward, do you think?
So that's a great question. So we would hope, so some of the condition assessments lead us to line pipe in certain areas where we have the aging infrastructure, cracked pipe, pipe that's corroded. In addition to the force main assessments, replacing those force mains prior to them failing. So yes, to answer your question, that would help some of those overflows that we see happening. The wet weather overflows are a little bit more tricky because we have what's called inflow and infiltration. So regardless if you line all the pipes and stop the infiltration, the groundwater from entering those pipes, water will migrate to the least common denominator. So it will just migrate where it can. So that's why with the wastewater, stormwater task force partnership, which we're presenting on Thursday morning, we are working with the stormwater department in Public Works to really facilitate a lot of drainage improvements to help with some of the inflow. So to increase our drainage capacity and get some of that water off of the system, particularly in the areas where the flood zones overlay the sewer infrastructure. So we're really hoping to leverage some of that, the study that we just completed, to assist with that. But that is the direction we're going. We want to address the wet weather conditions and proper drainage.
Well, I know Commissioner Justice has worked really, really hard on that task force.
Yes.
I think now, that now that we're having a, an update this week or a couple of days from now, it'd be really good when you get done with that, if there was a way that our communication department could get that out in the community, the work that has been done and what we're doing, so that they have an understanding that we are working really hard and furiously on the issue.
Yes, absolutely.
Especially for those areas that are, no matter how much it rains, they're always flooding. It'd be nice to know that, you know, we're trying to do our part.
Yes, we're working diligently to address the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was it for the presentation.
Any further questions?
Great job.
So we've had a motion and a second. So. We're ready to vote now, right?
They're ready to vote. And we have the attached resolution that details all the rate changes and the rationale behind it as well.
Did you vote? Did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, it passed us unanimously. Thank you to our staff for your leadership and all the hard work. Thank you to Stan Tech for an excellent report. And we appreciate it very much. So. Okay, there's nothing else to come before the board. We are adjourned.